Good evening. Welcome to the September 14, 2021 Meeting of the Chicago Board of Education. The Board has been in executive session since 5:00. Can I have a motion to return to the public meeting?
I move that we can leave the public session.
I'll second. David?
Hi.
Please stand before the committee. So welcome. School is underway. I'll be with a few short weeks to start us off this year. Classes are once again filled with the lively chatter of students at work and our fields are filled with kids playing and practicing and competing. Our Board of Education Middies are starting to meet again and we'll keep you updated on that work. And our teachers, staff, and administration are back to guiding our children through to the great place. I want to take a moment, especially for families new to the district, and I know there are a lot of people who are watching at home, to answer a question I've gotten many times since running for the school board a few years ago. Who are, what is the school board and what does it do? I thought that was worth sort of answering as we start off the school year. There are many entities in town and in our schools, from the PTA to the town board and to the school board, and we all have very different roles. As our school district boundaries do not limit town boundaries, we have many families who live in the Chappaqua School District who do not live in Newcastle, and our roles are completely separate. So I thought it was worth quoting what the New York State School Boards Association website says, that the Board of Education is a uniquely American institution. It oversees and manages the community's public school system. It ensures the public schools are flexible and responsive to the needs of the community. School boards are comprised of volunteers within the community who dedicate their time to better public education, except for those in Yawkes and New York City, board members are elected. So I just wanted to sort of say that because it keeps my attention through this whole process, but a lot of people weren't clear on exactly what role we fill here. So we are essentially elected volunteers and our role is to provide oversight, both fiscal and in areas of educational policy for the district. We work with the administration to support the governance of the district, but the day-to-day operations of the district falls to that side of the stage. That said, we are representatives of the community. So if you have questions or concerns, please feel free to reach out to us. Lauren, Kaylee, Jay, Vicki, and I are always happy to come to you. There are a few projects that got underway either before COVID or during COVID, so I just wanted to provide a brief update and let the community know that both the special education audits and equity audits are well underway and that the work is progressing on both of those and we will receive updates and share those updates with the community throughout the year. We thank the community for being patient with the tweaks and modifications that will inevitably come this year given the ongoing pandemic, but are happy that our tools are much closer to normal operations and hope they will continue to move in that direction. We look forward to seeing many of you and meeting new families this Saturday. Thank you. Yeah.
All right.
Thank you, Lauren. David, could you just rephrase my presentation and move to the opening started? So welcome to our first meeting in September. And normally we would have our academic assessment updated this meeting. The State Department has not released the ELA and MAS scores, so we are going to push that to hopefully the last meeting in September. And so what I'd like to do at this meeting is provide some updates for the community. Based on newly released New York State Department of Health guidance, which initially we were going to receive, but now we have received since the governor's welcome. But based on that new guidance, we have to make some adjustments to a few of our procedures. We begin by sharing what I can. Okay. Next slide, David. I think I just need to mic a little bit louder.
All right. So I just want to close my face. Okay. So I do know our community learning plan is online and I have to, this is a living document. And so for the next two weeks, I will be making some adjustments to the document based on what I'm about to share. So the first thing I need people to understand, which is an immediate change, is that if a person is symptomatic, whether or not they're vaccinated or unvaccinated, in order to return to school, they either need a physician's clearance because they may have something going on, they have like an underlying condition that is, or a negative PCR test. We can no longer accept the rapid antigen tests for individuals who are symptomatic and are aren't in school. That's where our staff and core teams. Then today, we received an email this morning from the Westchester Department of Health. They're in charge of our quarantine procedures. And they had language in there around outdoor activities for unvaccinated students. And so in my call conversation with the epidemiologists there, they are recommending that as our, when our kids are vaccinated and they're eating outside, that we keep them six feet apart. So we are going to start to do that effective immediately. In the high school, we are going to send out a notice to our students and families, to all of our students and families, having our students who are unvaccinated make that decision rather than setting up that structure for our high school community. Because what I share with you, our vaccinating numbers will understand that this is very high, hot. I also, we put some measurement tools in each classroom today to help our teachers ensure that students are remaining three feet apart in our classes because that impacts our quarantine if we have a positive case. And I also want to share with you that we're dealing with, and I know many of our families have been really flexible in understanding, some concerns regarding transportation due to bus shortages. And you know, based on some clarifications we received over the weekend and later on today regarding transportation quarantine when there's a positive individual on the bus in relation to students and drivers who may be unvaccinated around that person. You know, we're going to be talking in the next couple of days about whether or not we need to make some adjustments to our transportation procedures. Right now, we'll be very flexible and accommodating and transporting kids to after-student programs that aren't ours. But we really need to think about whether or not we're going to continue that in the future. But we want a couple of days to really talk that through with transportation and with our principals. Also, the principals next week will be meeting with kids and we will likely be sending students home a few minutes early so we can really nail down our seating charts on our buses. It's great that we have many more students riding the buses this year, but it's become a little bit more complicated, particularly on the afternoon runs and students are going home on different buses to their activities. So we need to, we need to do some more work around how we are supporting transportation in the district in light of what's, the amount of students that are on the buses and what we now know about the six-foot radius on the buses. It's not the same in the classroom, which is not clarification that was provided at the service school or so. I just, I want to let the board know and our families know that you'll probably be hearing from me about some adjustments potentially even in your future. But Chappaqua Transportation has worked really hard to hire new staff, but that is a process. It's not, you can't just hire a driver and have to look through an entire process to be served by. And we appreciate all they're doing to try to address this as quickly as possible, which I'm sure if you've seen in the news is not unique to our district. All right. So I want to share with you our updated vaccination numbers. And this is based on people who've submitted their cards and then superintendents have been given access to the New York State Vaccination System. So I'm able to go in and see who is vaccinated and verify information on vaccination cards. And that's really important because what that allows me to do is if we have an exposure, I'm able to, I'm able to allow students who are vaccinated that I verify in the New York State Health Department system are vaccinated to come to school. So I'm sharing that with you because I want you to understand that this is as accurate as we can be at this point based on a two-part, a two-pronged tech system. So you'll see that our vaccination numbers in our school are very high. Last week, I released the vaccination for secondary and elementary school teaching staff, but this is the vaccination number for all the staff in the building. And then we also provided the vaccination numbers for our contract employees who aren't our employees, but they work for us in our buildings. And then I wanted to share with you our updated student numbers. And you'll see 90% of the high school is vaccinated right now. We've got 100. We have 120 students in the building who aren't vaccinated. So we'll work with them to make sure they're as safe as they, as they can be. And luckily, young school students are much able, much more able to manage their own personal space when we're talking about younger students, but we have very high vaccinated vaccination rate, really, we have a high vaccination rate at Bell and Seven Bridges for students who tend to be vaccinated and for that, I'm very grateful. So in the new, um, New York State Department of Health guidelines, the district is required to test staff who are non-vaccinated. So based on what we know right now, we have 32 staff members in our district and we have a lot of employees. So that's not, it might seem like a big number, that's not really a big number for us. We have 32 people in our district who will be testing weekly or they'll have to submit tests taken on their own from a private provider. We have 22 bus drivers. We have two, we have three food service providers, but one of them is also a part of Chappaqua Transportation who will be tested weekly. And then we have one security guard. And then just to show you what our vaccination numbers look like, our vaccination numbers look like right now for people that are being tested weekly. We have nine athletes in the high school, 31 middle school athletes, and three coaches. Please understand that middle school number, we have some sub-graduates that aren't eligible to be vaccinated yet, so they're in that number. All right. So starting the, um, the week of September 27th, we are going to begin to test our staff. And the way we're going to do this, and we're going to extend this to our athletes. So now we have participants in person who are in court now that the weeks are more consistent and a lot of holidays. Our unvaccinated staff and athletes will have two pathways to share their vaccination status with the district. I'll start with the second. One pathway is to show up here between 3:00 and 5:00 o'clock on Monday through a process, a scheduled process, and we'll test you ourselves. We're able to do that on our website. We have a bunch of finite tests. We've been using those for the past year and a half and they'll have to do it if you want to do it well. So you can put you up here on every Monday, except for on this day, we'll be testing on Tuesday and we will test you. If that doesn't work for your schedule, then you can be tested privately on Saturday, Sunday, or Monday as long as your results are received by us by 5:00 p.m. on Monday when we're done testing on site. And out of the JOSH, the database has been developing an online system for our, our staff and our athletes to upload their test results if they choose to use pathway one. But in the event that a staff member doesn't follow either pathway, then Tuesday they can't come to work until they give us a negative test result. And our athletes, and they know this by now, that if they don't provide that negative test result by Monday afternoon, then Tuesday they have to, they have to get tested privately and they have to give us their results and then they go back to practice. So there are two ways that we're going to comply with this New York State Department of Education guidance. So just so you understand our thinking right now, we're still fleshing this out. So next Monday, we're just going to continue testing our unvaccinated athletes and coaches, but we're going to begin our system where people can upload results from private assessments that took place on Saturday, Sunday, or Monday before our testing process in person of British. And then starting on 27th, we will have two, two windows where our staff will come in for testing. And it will depend on where they work and their work hours. So they'll either be able to come from 3:00 to 4:00, or 4:00 to 5:00. What I want our parents to know is that in addition to testing our unvaccinated staff, that we'll have an opportunity, a sign-up opportunity for parents who would like us to test their unvaccinated kids on Mondays from 3:00 to 5:00. And what we'll do is as we continue to iron out how we're going to make this happen, is we will need, we'll have an optional webinar for our families next week at 6:00 p.m. to describe our process. And then we'll send out additional information on Thursday so families can sign up for testing. Now, we plan to have this be an open process in the beginning. So we will accommodate as many families who'd like their children, their unvaccinated children to be tested on Monday. But if we see that we have a huge response, we need to, we'll probably put some parameters in place and have a, have a system in place where people will have access to testing at least once a month. There's nothing in the guidance that shares with us how many unvaccinated students can have access to testing. Well, our position is what we would like to do is provide an opportunity for any parent who'd like their child tested to do so on Monday. But if we see that it's going to exceed our supply, our supplies, we need to, we'll have to make some adjustments. So our goals would be, we're going to, we're going to do this process until the end of October and then we'll have to, we'll make some adjustments if necessary. So as I was sharing with you earlier and what we'll send out tomorrow, next Wednesday at 6:00, we'll have a brief parent webinar so our families can understand how they will sign up for testing if they choose to elect to be tested by us on Monday. And then we'll send out information on Thursday. And this will absolutely be brief because I know there's open house at 7:00 for the elementary students. So I just, I just want people to understand that this is what our thinking is and we're going to explain to you in more detail how we're going to do this next week. There's a lot of logistical planning that's going to go into making this happen for us. But we will be, we will do it. We just want to make sure we do it well. And then for unvaccinated staff, just so you understand the process, because I know there's been concerns about unvaccinated staff and what are we doing about that? We can't require the vaccination, so how are we handling the testing? So next week, our unvaccinated staff have been a letter from me directing them to test it. They'll be able to access the webinar on Wednesday to understand the testing process. They'll receive the same logistical email as our, as our parents will on Thursday. And then their testing window will open on Saturday where they can get a private test on Saturday or Sunday or Monday morning. And I say Monday morning because some of our unvaccinated staff work in the afternoon. So they can come in the morning, they can go in the morning, get a test as long as they get the results by 5:00 p.m. We'll do our testing at Seven Bridges on Monday, 3:00 to 5:00. And then at 5:00, a window closes and anyone who's unvaccinated, who's not tested, will not be at work on Tuesday until they provide us with an unvacc, with a, with a negative COVID test. All right. So we had some exposure over the weekend and so we've had, we've had three incidents so far where students have had to be excluded from school. Two at Bell and one at West Orchard. There was a West Orchard incident and a Bell incident that dealt with transportation and then a Bell incident that dealt with an exposure that happened during the school day. And what I'd like to share with you in our experience in these situations, that anyone that was unvaccinated, anyone that was vaccinated was removed from the quarantine list, unable to attend school the next day. So it's very important that parents consider for students who haven't been vaccinated yet, that the ability to remain in school based on exposure due to your vaccination status is significant. I also want to share with you, particularly for our athletes, that based on my conversation today with the epidemiologist at, at the Westchester Department of Health, that if there's an exposure on a team and the entire team is vaccinated, there's no quarantine. So that is definitely an incentive for students who are interacting with each other in athletics to consider being vaccinated. Because if there is an exposure, the only students who are going to be excluded from that team will be the unvaccinated students. So it's my sincere hope that parents will take that seriously and the consideration moving forward here. And I know many of our families already have it because they're unvaccinated. But this is, this is where we are right now. We have two students who have been excluded from school by us. They're accessing the middle instruction. All of them will be back in school by next Tuesday. All right. And that is the end of my superintendent's presentation for today. So I didn't know if the board had any questions about anything I presented because it was all COVID-related.
Christine, I have, I do have a question also for the board regarding vaccination mandates. I know that as a local district, we don't have the authority to mandate vaccines, but I'd like to think about doing what we can to maybe lobby the governor's office to mandate that every staff member or faculty coming into contact with students be vaccinated. I think that, um, you know, we can't do it as a local district, but I think it would be important to do what we can to push that kind of mandate. And you know, I think we have to start somewhere. We've certainly, certainly been involved in a lot of advocacy for other issues regarding state funding and this is just as important, if not more, because it's in the health of our students and perhaps, you know, people and their families who are, you know, in sensitive health situations. So maybe we could think about at least writing a letter to the governor. I mean, maybe I can, you know, contact the people I know on other school boards and maybe we could start some kind of, some kind of advocacy effort.
What's, what do you think?
Uh, that's what I'm thinking.
Are they, are they?
I would like to see that happen. My understanding, and this could be wrong, is that Hope would like to see it happen as well, Governor Hope, but that she feels, my, my understanding from what I read is that she feels it needs to come from a legislature at this point or that she needs the legislature's support to issue the mandate.
So I don't, but I've heard the same thing, that it's all very important, that's the thing. And however it is, that they need to organize themselves. I think they, that's for them to figure out. It's not for us to figure out exactly what they want to do. So what we can do is simply, simply explain the need and, you know, lay out all the risks, which everyone knows about, which they also know, but they need to, there's some kind of pressure coming from us in our communities about what we expect and what we feel is reasonable for them to provide the support to us.
I also, Christine, in your communications with families, I think it would be great to, as much as we'd love to believe everybody's watching our meeting, I do know it would be great to outline what you told us in terms of sports participation and returning to school if you're vaccinated in those communications so that parents see very clearly that if their children are vaccinated, it means they won't be excluded, not only from school, but from sports and other, and potentially other activities as well.
Yes, I can do that definitely. I also do want to go back to our vaccination numbers, which are five compared to many other places. So I really appreciate our staff and our students and their families for, you know, making sure that we're all doing what we need to do to keep this district safe. And acknowledging as well that students don't make vaccination decisions for themselves, parents make that decision for them. So we've been, it's been really important to us that we make sure that we don't feel like there's a two-tiered system here in this district for decisions that aren't being made by students for themselves. So we'll continue, we'll continue on that path. But look, I also want to acknowledge, you got your document like a week ago and because of the tremendous work of our team and our nurses, we're able to mobilize and begin testing. And I don't know if that's the thing everywhere else, but it certainly is the case here. And so I want to appreciate the administration and our nursing team because they're, they're the ones that are working hard to be able to help us meet the guidelines to keep our students safe. So thank you. Thanks for that. And thank you to our nurses if you're watching from home because without them helping us, and that's why we feel like that. So let you know, at the next meeting, we'll have down to one, one layer of process. So let you know how many people have come for testing and I'll, I'll share an update with the community on how that, how that.
Okay. Thank you. So we move on now to committee reports. I know a lot of committees are in the process of getting set up and getting started, but if anybody wants to make a report.
What committee, what committee will be this week, this coming week? Still looking for additional members on the committee. If you would serve on that, if you have your background, please do contact me or come to my office. This is pretty good.
Are you good? David? Black, we can't see ourselves now. We can't see ourselves on the screen.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Great. Um, so that actually tonight brings us to our public comment period. We welcome public comments and in respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Board members may be contacted via email or phone. After the public comment period has been completed, board members may have an exception among themselves regarding the comments presented. So if you'd like to make a comment, please go down to one of the microphones and then before you begin your comment, please just tell us your, your name and address.
Hi, everyone. My name is Bill Ponders. I live in Chappaqua, Gary Drive, and I've got five kids that have gone through the system. Well, one left in the system and the other four through. Um, I just have a few questions for you guys. And I'll try and keep it brief. I know I only have three minutes. The first is, I'd like a copy of the signed contract to sell the property over a button up. I understand that it was, that it was signed and obviously it was a lot less than the sale price that was being asked. And I would just like a copy of that and any other side agreements or pieces relating to that. Also, I'd like an update on the board committee. You guys can tell us what the costs were associated with the sale, both in terms of what's been incurred to date and maybe any estimates to complete from here on in and so forth. And then what the proceeds would be after any deductions, commissions, and escrow, anything else like that? And what the board would expect in terms of the real estate taxes over the next two years to be? And perhaps how many students, new students would be added to the new homes that are slated to be built as part of the sale? So if you guys can provide a summary or detail of each one of those pieces, I would appreciate it. It would be very helpful. So if I can look at it and see, because the number says I calculate and just come out a bit strange. Also, I'd like the board to state their position on the environmental impact. When I was reading the minutes of last week, it said that there were, the board said that there was no significant impact environmentally and I just would like your maybe elaboration on that point as part of the sale to a developer who's got to put in roads and homes and everything on the open space. I just am curious to see what, what's behind that. And then lastly, I wanted to know if the board intends to put this to a public vote as part of the sale. I'm interested, I know that the community, I would expect with such an issue, would have a lot of interest or could have a lot of views on this particular topic, especially in light of the way the amounts of sale proceeds and economics look to the town and trading that off for, for the other piece of the, giving up the environmental aspect of the property. So with that, I, if you guys want to go back through, and I know I only have three minutes here. If you can discuss anything that you'd like to do. Close it?
Your time is up.
All right. My time's up. So I know this is a limited amount of time I get to come up here and speak. If you guys can provide some, some input or some collaboration on some of these things, I'd appreciate it. Because we really, this whole process has just been a lot of lack of transparency. And I think it's important that this be, public at least get the ability to vote. And I ask you if they're going, if they're going. And I ask you if they're going, if they're going to be able to vote on this.
So I just want to remind the public that this is actually not a question and answer period, but a public comment period. I'd certainly make note of the questions you ask, now most of which, frankly, have been addressed at previous board meetings in great detail. And so that information is available. And, you know, I, I think that most of these answers have been provided at previous board meetings.
Only if I make, the information that has been provided though has changed significantly. And I just, that's why I'm asking the questions because it's not, the information is not in the public documents. And some things have been said here, but they are a lot different.
I'm sorry.
And we're relying on you guys. We're relying on you guys. I know. Well, look, then the rest of the pieces, I'm just with likeness to go to a public vote and not have it behind us. The pieces haven't been publicly disclosed.
Is public comment? If anybody else. Okay, I'm going to close the public comment as there does not seem to be anybody else coming up to the right ground.
Okay, can we have just a brief discussion? So I would just suggest that if anyone was requesting documents from the district, you need to contact Andrew Lennon. He can provide those for you through the FOIA process. He's up here, sir. So if you face this as superintendent of business, we could certainly do that after the meeting. If you, if you wait until the end of the meeting, he can give you his contact information. Just a point of clarity, the public business, the Board of Education is not required to have the sale of property up for, at least to go by your department. So I just wanted to provide that clarity. But again, there's no conversation, there's no discussion. However, you can provide any document that you need. You just have to go through the right process. And Andrew Lennon, who's over here, could certainly help you with that. So thank you.
Just thing I ask for, if I have to back up.
Okay, we're going to turn now to item C on the agenda, which is approvals and ratifications. Can I please have a motion for item 3.1, which is accepting the minutes of the August 30th, 2021 Board of Education?
I move 3.1.
I second. Any questions or comments? favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I recommend 4.1 instructional assessment.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for Act 4.1.
I will second that. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I recommend 4.2 non-instructional assessment.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for Act 4.2. Second, non-instructional.
I second. You second. Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bring this to item 5, which is our consent agenda. The use of consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting in a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the Board who wishes to discuss in particular a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all Board members to be heard on any issue. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following consent agenda submitted by the super. So let me just ask this preliminary matter. Does anybody want to remove any items on the consent agenda? Okay, so tonight's consent agenda is 5.1 through 5.8. It covers CSE summaries, routine contracts, and we make change amendments. Can I have a motion to move 5.1 through 5.8?
I'll move the consent agenda.
I second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
All aye.
There's nothing under 6 or 7 tonight. So our next item is our notice of future meetings. We will be back here meeting on Wednesday, September 29th at 7:30. That will be our audit approval and the district performance report. And then we will be on Wednesday at September 15th, also at 7:30, when we will hear from our board of executives. So can I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting at 8:13?
I'll move to adjourn at 8:00.
I second, all in favor? Okay, you adjourn.